Members, please take your seats. I note that the hour has come. And that a present. A quorum at this council is present. Retire to their seats outside the rails. Ask you for all sidebar conversations to be taken outside the council chambers. And please put your cell phones on silence and/or vibrate. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Father Francis P. Foley, retired captain of the United States Navy Chaplain Corps, pastor of St. Timothy's Parish, and a minister of St. Bartholomew Parish. He is here today as guest of Councilmember Mike Driscoll. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Eternal Father, you are the source of everything that is good and true and beautiful. With humility and gratitude, we come before you and implore your blessing upon our fair city and upon your humble servants who make this great metropolis vibrant with talent, culture, diversity, brotherly love, welcoming neighborhoods, unequaled sports teams, and fantastic food. Keep safe and skilled those who protect and provide for our well-being: police, firemen, emergency medical personnel, and all those sailors, soldiers, Marines, airmen, and Coast Guardsmen who serve here and around the world. Bless the teachers in our schools, the sanitation workers, and the many men and women who keep the numerous offices and agencies of our fair city, serving our citizens, running smoothly and efficiently day in and day out, all throughout the year. Finally, bless our city council members and their staffs. They are men and women of talent, devotion, and passion about our communities and our city. Their political affiliations are diverse, their priorities are sometimes separate, but in their love of Philadelphia and the people they serve, they are as one. United in their determination to do what is right and defend what is true. Fill them, Lord, with your wisdom, guide them by your light. Renew them with your strength and bless them, their staffs, and their families, with your peace. In your most holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. The Chair thanks Father Foley for the invocation. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 16, 2025. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 16, 2025, be approved.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 16, 2025, stand approved. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmar Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of City Council, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember O'Neil.
The Chair will think the Councilmember leave will be granted. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmar Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Gilmar Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The Chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmar Richardson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. If you've ever driven to work in the morning in Philadelphia or ridden on a Septa bus, chances are you started your day with the Rise and Grind Morning Show on Power 99. For 14 years, the Rise and Grind Morning Show was the soundtrack to our city's mornings. From parents driving their kids to school to Philadelphians headed to work, it became a daily tradition for many of us, including me. airing weekdays from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on Power 99 FM, the show was more than just music, it was conversation, it was community, and it was our culture. It was where hip-hop and R&B meant real talk about life, relationships, and the issues shaping our great city. Today, my colleagues, it is my honor and privilege to welcome to City Council chambers the voices behind the magic. Today, we have with us The Mother Knows and Mikey Dread, two of the most recognized and respected names in Philadelphia radio. A true Philadelphia radio legend, many of us remember Mikey Dread from his time on the weeknight Hot Boy Show alongside co-host Uncle Oh. With 30 years at Power 99, his energy and humor made him a trusted presence for listeners all across the Delaware Valley. Mother Knows, known for his quick wit and big personality, has been a personal favorite of mine and a fan since joining Power 99. His segment "The Tea" was a can't-miss part of our mornings, full of gossip, fun, and the kind of humor that only mother could deliver. Together, they helped Rise and Grind become one of the top-rated shows in the region, reaching tens of thousands every single morning and giving voice to our city's culture. Today, as we recognize the show's incredible legacy and impact, we are proud to welcome Mikey Dread and Mother Knows to Philadelphia City Council for all the mornings they woke us up and helped us stay connected as a city. Thank you very, very much. Please stand and be recognized. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. And I've been on Rise and Grind shows several different times, and they've always used their platform to speak truth to power. And Dr. Phillips, I'm thinking maybe even Rise and Grind City Council, so might be a thought. But congratulations, fellows, on your acknowledgement. We appreciate all your hard work and dedication. As there are no presentations today... The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the sergeant-at-arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Would the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
On October 17th, pursuant to sections 4-604 and 2-307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills: Bill Number 250771, Commission voted to extend its review 45 additional days; Bill Number 250834, Commission voted to extend its review 45 additional days; and on October 20th, pursuant to sections 4-604 and 2-307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills: Bill Number 250706, 250719, 250723, 250767, 250772, 250800, 250801, 250802, 250803, 250804, Commission voted to extend its review 45 additional days; 250806, 250807, 250808, 250809, 250810, 250811, Approval with amendments; 250830, 250835, 250836, 250839, 250842, 250845, Commission voted to extend its review 45 additional days; and 250847. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the Journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution for introduction today for a young woman whose light and kindness has reflected the very best of Philadelphia, Kada Scott.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A Privileged Resolution Honoring the Life and Legacy of Kada Scott, A Beacon of Light and Love in Philadelphia, Remembered for Her Faith, Kindness, and Countless Lives She Touched.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Captain Gilmar Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer one bill and two privileged resolutions. The bill and one privileged resolution is on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the bill and the resolutions?
An Ordinance Renaming the Paschaville Library to the Hardy Williams Library of Paschaville in Honor of Penn State Senator, Pennsylvania State Senator Hardy Williams, a distinguished politician and trailblazer for the African-American community.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And a Privileged Resolution Honoring the Life and Legacy of Michael I. Days for his extensive career as a reporter and editor for the Philadelphia Daily News and later as vice president for diversity and inclusion at the Philadelphia Inquirer.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a Privileged Resolution Recognizing and Honoring Power 99's Rise and Grind Morning Show for Its Lasting Contributions to Radio and the Cultural Fabric of the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gortier.
Good morning, Council President. Today, I have one bill and one privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolution?
An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the Vicinity of 5021 through 23 Baltimore Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19143, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a Privileged Resolution Recognizing Chris Gale, Executive Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia, for his work, exemplary work in advocacy in ensuring the safety and inclusivity of cyclists throughout Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Today, I have two resolutions and one bill, but I do want to take a moment of privilege, Council President, to thank Majority Leader Catherine Gilmar Richardson for her resolution around Power 99 Rise and Grind Show. Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you, colleague. That's a great resolution, and thank you for your service to the city of Philadelphia.
Would the chief clerk please read the titles of the resolutions, please?
An Ordinance Amending Chapter 19-2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes to Establish a Partial Exemption for Certain Childcare Service Businesses, all under certain terms and conditions.
Excellent. This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a Privileged Resolution Honoring and Recognizing the Atlantic Center for Capital Representation and its staff for 15 years of dedicated service, addressing systemic issues with the death penalty in Pennsylvania and across the nation.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar...
And a privileged...
Go ahead.
And a privileged resolution celebrating the Mural Arts Program and recognizing the month of October as Mural Arts Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer one bill and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much, sir. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolution?
An Ordinance Granting Permission to Have Referred Business Association to Install and Maintain Encroachments in the Nature of Decorating Light Fixtures Attached to Existing Facilities Owned by the City or Other Entities Subject to Such Owners' Consent, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a Privileged Resolution Authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to Hold a Hearing to Examine the City of Philadelphia Strategies, Laws, and Policies for Protecting Victims of Abuse and Domestic Violence Within the Justice System, including Courts, the Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney's Office, and the Philadelphia Police Department.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, public. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A Privileged Resolution Commemorating and Honoring the 2025 Philadelphia Walk to End Alzheimer's for Mobilizing Thousands of Philadelphians in the Ongoing Fight Against Alzheimer's Through Advocacy, Research, and Community Care.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Katty Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning. I have no bills and resolutions today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Today, I offer three bills, one privileged resolution, and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An Ordinance Amending Section 14-529 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fifth District Overlay District to Provide for Building Requirements to Prevent Vacant Lots, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the Vicinity of 161 West Gerard Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19122, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And an Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by Making Technical Changes to the Text That Has Expired, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a Non-Privileged Resolution also naming Oxford Street between Broad Street and 15th Street as Jake and Sarah Adams Avenue.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a Privileged Resolution Authorizing the Council Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to Hold Hearings to Investigate the City's Payment and Refund Systems for Municipal Taxes.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
I have no bills or resolutions today.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jim Harity.
Council President, I have no bills or resolutions today.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Nicholas O'Rourke.
Good morning, Council President. Philadelphians, all, I have one privileged resolution to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A Privileged Resolution Honoring the Life and Legacy of Rabbi Arthur Ocean Waschow, a prophetic activist and author grounded in Jewish tradition and faith, who created the foundation on which generations of moral activists stand.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution to offer today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A Non-Privileged Resolution Requesting the Mayor to Return to Counsel Bill Number 250771 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing 3419 Kensington Partners or a Subsequent Owner to Install, Own, and Maintain an Encroachment at 3423 Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from South Philadelphia, Councilman Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and two resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the Vicinity of 2535 through 37 South 13th Street, Philadelphia, PA 19148, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a Privileged Resolution Honoring and Recognizing Reverend Carolyn Clarine Cavaness for the one-year anniversary of her pastoral appointment as the historic Mother Bethel AME Church.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a Privileged Resolution Recognizing and Congratulating the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 98 on the momentous occasion of its 125th anniversary, celebrating over a century of exemplary leadership, advocacy, and unwavering dedication to the rights and welfare of electrical workers.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Deputy Whip Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
Recognizing the extraordinary contributions and lifetime achievements of Dr. Malefie Keti Assanti, founder of the Afrocentricity and founder of the Malefie Keti Assanti (MKA) Institute for Afrocentric Studies in the Germantown Neighborhood.
That's a good one. Good job. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I have two resolutions, both privileged, one on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A Privileged Resolution Authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to Hold Hearings to Examine the Impacts of the Current Crisis Threatening the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program (SNAP) and Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program Education (SNAP-ED) on Food and Nutrition Security in Philadelphia, including barriers to accessing benefits, disruption to nutrition education and outreach, consequences for residents, and opportunities for coordinated city and community response.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a Privileged Resolution Recognizing and Affirming the City of Philadelphia's Commitment to Public Health, grounded in scientific evidence, and opposing state proposals that would weaken proven protections, including childhood immunizations, community water fluoridation, and practical steps that limit the spread of disease in schools.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar. For the record, the previous resolution on SNAP benefits and SNAP-AD benefits was also lead co-sponsored by Councilman Rulandau. The next order of business is reports from committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out 12 bills with a favorable recommendation.
For the record, how many bills is that?
Twelve.
Twelve. Thank you. Would the chief clerk please read the report of the 12 bills?
The Committee on Rules to which were referred the following bills: Bill Number 250534, An Ordinance Continuing the Mayfair Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Frankfurt Avenue, from the north side of Harbison Avenue to the south side of Sheffield Street, and certain blocks of streets that intersect that portion of Frankfurt Avenue, approving a change of the boundaries of the district to include 6700 Roland Avenue to the service area, approving a change of boundaries to the district to remove from the service area 4014 through 4034 Robin Street, as well as 3501 through 3539 Ryan Avenue, continuing the Mayfair Business Improvement District Inc., a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation as a Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for and report concerning the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with the Mayfair Business Improvement District Inc. relating to the district, and reauthorizing the Mayfair Business Improvement District Inc. to assess property owners within the district, a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, and under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250572, An Ordinance Amending Section 2-112 of the Philadelphia Code entitled City Commissioners by Removing the Powers and Duties of the Department of Licenses and Inspections Over Matters Relating to Weights and Measures, Amending Title IX Entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by Removing Provisions Relating to Amusement Devices and Weights and Measures and Making Related Technical Changes, and Amending Title 19 Entitled Finance and Tax Collections by Eliminating Provisions Related to Amusement Licenses and Weights and Measures Registration, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250577, An Ordinance Repealing in Its Entirety the Following Ordinance: Approved December 23, 2024, Bill Number 240964-AO2, authorizing the City of Philadelphia to Organize an Authority to be Known as the Arena Services District Authority pursuant to the Terms of the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250648, An Ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by North Street, Broad Street, Walla Street, and 15th Street. Bill Number 250800, An Ordinance Amending Title 14-602 entitled Use Tables by prohibiting drug paraphernalia sales in certain industrial districts, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250802, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes to text that has expired, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250803, An Ordinance Amending Section 14-524 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fourth District Overlay District by clarifying allowed uses, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 250810, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by Clarifying Certain Provisions Related to Mixed-Income Housing, Revising the Quality Standards for Affordable Units Within Mixed-Income Developments, and Making Related Technical Changes, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 250767, An Ordinance Repealing in Its Entirety Bill Number 240415, approved July 19, 2024, entitled An Ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Island Avenue, the Delaware Expressway, and Bartram Avenue. Bill Number 250804, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by Amending Certain Provisions of Chapter 14-500 entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by Creating the University Community Overlay District and Making Related Technical Changes, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 250808, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by Revising and Clarifying Certain Provisions and Making Technical Changes to the text that has expired, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 250811, An Ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ardley Street, Ed Sedgwick Street, and Septa Chestnut Hill East Line and East Gorgas Lane, respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Rules, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the chief clerk.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading council. calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a report from the Committee on License and Inspections.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports out four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. For the Chief Clerk, please read the report.
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections to which were referred the following bills: Bill Number 250708, Inordinates Amending Self-Cod A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, the Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, to revise penalties associated with stop work and cease operations orders under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250709, Inordinates Amending Section 9-4403 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Enforcement" to provide for the continuation of nuisance business enforcement following a change in business under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250722, Inordinates Adding a New Chapter, Chapter 21-3500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Public Utility Meters" to prohibit provision of a second utility meter by a public utility at a residential property without evidence of a valid housing rental license for the property, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250773, Inordinates Amending Chapter 9-4900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Prohibition Use of Certain Bags by Retail Establishments" to modify certain definitions, require retail establishments to charge a fee for the provision of a bag to customers, and require signage, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Licenses and Inspection, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in propriety, seconded, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion regarding special business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time.
It has been moved in propriety, seconded, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of special business at this time. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion regarding a resolution introduced today to recall Bill Number 250771. Would a clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A resolution requesting the mayor return to council Bill Number 250771 entitled "Inordinates Authorizing 3419 Kensington Partners or a Subsequent Owner to Install, Own, and Maintain an Encroachment at 3423 Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules to allow consideration of this resolution today.
It has been moved in propriety, seconded, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the resolution at this time. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in propriety, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read a letter from the mayor?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am returning here with, as requested by your resolution adopted today, Bill Number 250771 entitled "Inordinates Authorizing 3419 Kensington Partners or a Subsequent Owner to Install, Own, and Maintain an Encroachment at 3423 Kensington Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19134, under certain terms and conditions for the purpose of reconsideration by council of the vote by which said bill passed council."
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion regarding that council reconsider the vote by which Bill Number 250771 was passed.
So moved, Mr. President.
All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the motion carries and the vote by which Bill Number 250771 was passed has been reconsidered, and the bill will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committees with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for motion concerning the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today: Numbers 250892, 250897, 250493-A, 250654, and 250718-A. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held: 250303, 250646, and 250721.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called under order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments when the same subject matter. I would now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
May we have Kate Perez, Jeremy Blattstein, Mikey Dread, Mother Knows, and Marie Fleming to the podium. We have Kate Perez, Jeremy Blattstein, Mikey Dread, Mother Knows, Marie Fleming.
Hello. My name is Jeremy Blattstein. Today I am here in support of Bill Number 250718-A, which gives the Philadelphia Department of Streets the authority to continue to make changes and additions to parking regulations in Center City. To be clear, this has been in the understanding since the 1980s. It just wasn't properly legislated. This is a common sense, good governance bill. It would streamline a process that could be bogged down by unnecessary red tape. It allows streets and Otis, the people who actually manage our transportation network day-to-day, to make data-driven decisions faster and more effectively. Every loading zone, every curb change, every parking adjustment would acquire a bureaucratic process that could slow down safety improvements, block businesses from adapting, and prevent the city from responding quickly to help people actually use our streets. This bill doesn't remove oversight. It simply ensures expertise leads the way. Streets already maintains our infrastructure. This just gives them the flexibility to act when conditions on the ground demand it. This legislation lets the city move at the speed of the city, not the speed of bureaucracy. The quarrelsome contrarian, aka City Councilmember Jay Young, should also include the Fifth District in this bill. Currently, he is not including it, and it is a mistake. I would also like to acknowledge you, City Council President Johnson, and your team for going up to Hoboken yesterday and listening, learning about what they're doing to ensure Vision Zero works. And we're talking about Sepda! I just want to make sure everybody understands that the regional rail is delayed still because of the inspections that are occurring of the regional rail's silver-liner cars, along with not having proper funding. So I just want to make sure that that are the two things that everyone needs to understand. And last but not least, I would like to remember Kada Scott, who should be alive today if it was not for the mistakes made by Philadelphia District Attorney Larry Krasner's office by not appealing the bail and dropping the charges of Keon King. Ride the ride. Thank you.
Mr. Blattstein, just stay right there. I think we have additional information regarding Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young. The Chair recognizes Chair Jeffrey J. Young.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you so much for recognizing me. So I will always be quarrelsome when it comes to fighting for my constituents and my residents, right? And making sure they have the proper information so I can make the decision. So when it comes to this particular bill, I have not spoken to the community about this bill to see how it would affect them. But we will be having a town hall in the Center City area. This will be one of the topics that the community members will have some say on. So when you go in and you speak to these things, you have no idea what you're speaking of. You have no idea my thoughts behind it. So, ask me a question. Every time you ask me a question, I respond. I give you the rationale before you come in here making baseless statements on City Council floor. So please, please, and anyone who wants to do that, come talk to me about it first before you make these baseless statements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Thanks, the member. For the Chief Clerk, please call the next person.
We have Mikey Dread, Mother Knows, Marie Fleming, and may David Alexander Jenkins, Jasmine Easley, Melanie Burney, Janice Armstrong, or Janice Armstrong, and Joseph Blake also make their way to the podium.
The floor is yours.
Showtime. Good morning. My name is Mother Knows from the Rise and Grind Morning Show. Thank you so much to Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson and her fabulous team for this incredible honor. I'm full of gratitude. I would like to extend my gratitude to my team, family, and friends who have supported me every step of the way. This resolution is not just a recognition of my work, but a testament to the collective effort and dedication that goes into making it happen. Thank you again for this prestigious resolution. I am grateful, and I will forever remember this moment from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for letting the Rise and Grind Morning Show come into your homes, come into your cars, letting us humor you, educate you, inform you, put a smile on your face. It's far from over. This is only the beginning. Thank you once again.
Mikey Dread from the Rise and Grind Morning Show, I just want to say, appreciate the acknowledgement. A lot of what Mother and I did on the radio was about the community, about giving back. It wasn't always about us and showing our personality. It was about what we could give to the listeners and what the listeners could give back to us. And let's be clear on this. It wasn't just me and Mother. The show started out with Uncle O, Mina Say What, and then moved on to Roxy, Mother, and I. So it's just not Mother and I. There was a whole team behind us. And, you know, I'm proud to say that we've been the longest-running morning show on Power 99 ever. So that puts us with the greats like, that puts us with the greats like BJ in the Morning, Carter and Sanborn, Wendy Williams, Kobe Cole, Golden Boy, Q D Z, Golden Girl, Lorraine Ballad Moral, Lironda Upsher, all these greats that have been on Power 99. And it's just an honor for our names to be put in the same sentence with them. I really appreciate this. This is my first time in here. All the years that we've had can yach- a lot of you guys on the show, and it's just amazing to see. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Congratulations. One second, Mr. Alexander. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
I know they're gonna be leaving soon, but I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Mother Knows and Mikey Dread because what Mikey said earlier, they did this for our community. And we'd often, in Philadelphia, you know, citizens got their news from Power 99, Mikey Dread, and Mother Knows. I even remember growing up with Carter and Sanborn. My mom makes sure I listen to Carter and Sanborn. So the value of having a local personality talk about issues and things in our community means a lot. And, you know, private companies have the right to make decisions, to go nationally syndicated. We love the Breakfast Club and what they do. You're right. There's some things that are kind of off about the Breakfast Club.
We like Rise and Grind.
But, but I'm, but I'm going to say this, is that you have the right to make that decision, but private companies also have the right to do the right thing. And the right thing is ensuring that local communities get news and information that they need, as well as it feels like it's Philadelphia. And Mikey Dread and Mother Knows made radio feel like Philadelphia and make sure Philadelphians understood the importance of why their community matter. And so I just had to say that before they left. Thank y'all so much.
And I would be remiss if I didn't just briefly acknowledge the hundreds of community organizations and events that they have supported, showing up with their van, coming out, bringing radio personality on site. And it really helped a lot of us when we all first got started, those of us who were activists before we became elected officials. So to Rise and Grind, keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Mr. David Alexander.
Mr. President, members and guests, I rise in support of Resolution 250303, as presented by Member Thomas, honoring the Philadelphia Juvenile System Service Center School on the occasion of its 20th biannual celebration. Carpe diem is a thematic, indeed, material. It is the very tenet and the theology of hope that we are taught is enshrined in the very dignity of our justice system. Justice William Rush reminds us is reformation. It is not vindictive in nature. It is not suffering. William Penn reminds us that to punish is to amend and not to avenge. It is of God. That truth still echoes in our city's conscience, in every young life given another chance to begin again, as we do our level best to ensure that man is judged not by the depth of his failures, but by his internal struggle to strive for flight. Within those walls, this program restores what the city's earliest founders, the Quakers, first envisioned, a world of redemption. Penitent is not punishment, a radical idea to ingest owning to a world that too oft prefers the lash to the lesson. We have not always gotten that right, and I admit that, but Carpe Diem in its 20 years has something to learn us. It affirms that justice, when guided by compassion, leads a person back to themselves, that by uniting judges of color who serve our courts with the young people whose futures depend on seeing that First Corinthians' more excellent way. In these meetings, power becomes membership. The gavel becomes a bridge. The students are reminded that the law is, at its best, not an instrument of exclusion, but a mirror of potential meant to inspire the valiant marker we must all bear of citizen. More than 20 judges have now taken part in this remarkable effort, each one bearing witness to a truth older than its chamber. The restoration is the truest form of love. Therefore, justice, if applied correctly, is love. Today, we affirm a moral truth that runs through our city's founding, that rectitude and mercy walk hand in hand, and that the future of our children, particularly when they stumble, remains a collective matter of sacred responsibility here in this city of brotherly love. I yield back.
Good morning, City Council, Council President and City Council. My name is Jasmine Easley, and I'm the Special Assistant Legislative Aid for Councilmember Landau. I want to first and foremost thank Councilmember Landau for introducing the resolution to honor the 2025 Philadelphia Walked In Alzheimer's, and City Council for acknowledging the supporting issue. The Walked In Alzheimer's is an event that brings hundreds of communities across the United States to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease, highlight the stories of those affected by Alzheimer's, support their caregivers, and further show community visibility and solidarity. In the Philadelphia region, thousands will gather at Citizen Bank Park on Saturday, November 8, to walk in honor of their loved ones suffering from disease and continuing the fights raised for, raised funds for care, support services, research, and further the mission of the Alzheimer's Association. I walk in honor of my great-grandfather Eddie Hoxton, who is my first experience with Alzheimer's disease. In 2010, he was the first person in our family to be diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease. As a family, we had to educate ourselves on what Alzheimer's is and what symptoms my great-grandfather was soon experienced. Unfortunately, his mind progressively declined shortly after being diagnosed, leading him not to recognize us, which created ongoing frustration for him as he lost track of time, place, and his memories. In 2013, my mother left her job to become his full-time caregiver, and I proudly served as her little assistant at the age of 12. as her little assistant at the age of 12, witnessing firsthand the toll the disease takes on both those living with it and those who love them. On June 9th, 2015, I lost my great grandfather Eddie to this devastating illness. At a funeral, I made a promise to keep his memory alive by spreading awareness and fighting for a cure. In 2020, due to this detrimental loss to my entire family, we decided to lead the charge to raise awareness by participating in our first Philly Walked In Alzheimer's. It is with great pride and admiration to stand as team captain for Eddie's legacy walk team. This past June 9th, 2025 marked the 10-year anniversary of his passing, and on August 8th, we celebrated what would have been his 100th birthday. Though he is no longer with us, his legacy lives on through every step we take, every story we share, and every person we reach. I'm committed to this cause because no one should face Alzheimer's alone. Together, we can honor the past, support families in the present, in the present, and fight for our future without this disease. Thank you again for this honor.
We have Melanie Bernie, Janice Armstrong, Joseph Blake, May Chris Gale, Sarah Glover, and Okwua Asoneye also make their way to the podium.
There is a time for everything and a season for every activity under the heavens, a time to be born and a time to die. Good morning. I am Melanie Bernie, the new president of the National Association of Black Journalists Philadelphia Chapter. My heart is heavy today. I have been at a loss since we received a call Saturday night from Mike's wife informing us that he had transitioned. We lost a giant, not only in Philadelphia journalism, but around the country. Writer, journalist, author, media executive, champion for diversity. History will record Michael I. Daze as the first black editor of the Philadelphia Daily News. He led the People Paper to a Pulitzer Prize. He held executive positions at the Philadelphia Inquirer. His resume was extensive and impressive, but there was so much more. Husband, father, grandfather, brother, mentor, and friend to many. He was a proud son of Philadelphia. He often reminded us that he was from North Philadelphia. And the beauty of Michael Daze was his ability to make everyone feel special. The tributes have poured in from around the country. Mike had a profound impact. He made journalism better, and he made us better, better journalists and better people. On behalf of NABJ Philadelphia, I'd like to express my gratitude to Council President Kenyatta Johnson and Council for recognizing Mike. And thank you, Vincent Thompson, for making this happen. Looks like I'm out of time. One last thought. We have established the Michael I. Daze Scholarship Fund so that we can help the next generation of aspiring young journalists realize their dreams. The legacy will live on. We will continue the work, and we will fight until the end. Go to our website, and you can find the scholarship information. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President, members, guests. My name's Janice Armstrong. I'm a columnist with the Inquirer and Daily News. And I'm not gonna read most of my prepared remarks because I've got some other colleagues who'd like to get up here and say a few words. But I'm really struck by the number of people who, some of y'all are on deadline, who came out today in support of Michael Daze. And I was just wondering, could my colleagues in the press and the media whose lives have been impacted by Michael Daze, would you please stand? And also the members of the National Association of Black Journalists Philadelphia Chapter, could you stand as well? Thank you. Thank you. As Melanie has already mentioned, you know, he was from Philadelphia. He spent nearly his entire journalism career here in Philadelphia, telling the city's stories. He was fair. He was compassionate, and he was committed, especially committed, to helping underserved communities. Our city is better because of his work at the Daily News and Inquirer. And I'm better as a person and as a journalist for having had him as a boss, an editor, mentor, and a friend. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President. I just want to thank you personally, as someone who also travels east, for the honor of what you're doing this morning. I look around, my name is Joseph Blake, and I was a longtime reporter at the Philadelphia Inquirer and Daily News. And I look around in this council chambers, and I see council people that I used to cover before they were council people, activists on the street doing what they were doing for the good of the people. And Mike and I also covered City Hall. And one of the great things we loved about covering City Hall was because it was an honor to cover the people who represented the people. No one ever cursed at us? Oh, I did, Joseph Blake? Thought I did, certainly, for the record. When we were covering City Council and City Hall and the judges, no one ever disrespected us, and we never disrespected anyone else. Mike and I loved that. And we also loved going to the bar across the street when I was there and get chicken wings and talk to the council people in an informal kind of way. I don't know whether that still goes on or not, but it certainly helped us. People like Curtis Jones and other folks just really, really helped us as young journalists because we believed in what you were doing, and you believed in our honesty and passion as well. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and my North Philly brother, who we go so far back, we used to be on the Ninth Street Bridge to take the yellow bus to go pick blueberries in the summer in Hamilton Township, New Jersey. So he was a good man. He's still a good man. I know his legacy will live on in the people I see around in this room, whom he covered and I covered. Thank you very much, Mr. President. We appreciate the honor.
Thank you. You're welcome.
My name is Karen Warrington. So often when someone passes, we almost automatically say, he'll be missed. But Michael Daze will really be missed because of his ability to handle the super difficult job of being positioned between the legitimate concerns of the black community, Ray Inky coverage, and answering to the folk who paid his salary. Although he always would put a positive spin on whatever the crisis of the day was, I'm sure it took a toll on him. I always felt very close to Michael over the decades of knowing him, no matter how our professional responsibilities changed. He was always accessible, warm, and supportive. He was genuinely a friend, and more importantly, he was a friend to his community as well as the broader community, and we thank his family for sharing him with us.
Good morning, Council President Johnson and Council Members. My name is Okwua Asoneye. That's N-K-W-A, last name A-S-O-N-Y-E. I'm a sports broadcaster and journalist working behind the scenes at 6 ABC, and I'm also honored to soon be serving as President-elect of NABJ Philadelphia. When I first got to the city, I knew that joining the chapter was going to be really, really important for me, and Mike was a huge part of that. And I came fresh in, I had to do my homework, but the more that I learned about Mike, the more that I understood the impact that he had. I only had a chance to spend a year with him, but even in that year, I learned from the way he carried himself, the conversations that we had, the encouragement when I thought that some of the things that we were going for weren't really going to get accomplished, and yet he was there. He was resolute, and I really wish I had more time with him. Legacy is a word that gets thrown around a lot, but when it comes to Mike Daze, it's absolutely imperative that we honor him. And I'm very glad that this resolution is brought forward because especially in these times, it's important that the impact that's being had is cemented forever. I thank you for your time.
We have Sarah Glover, Chris Gale, Mari Gonzalez, May Robert Sims, Shirley Dash, and Michael Galvin also make their way to the podium. So Sarah Glover, Chris Gale, Mari Gonzalez, Robert Sims, Shirley Dash, and Michael Galvin.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Council President. My name is Chris Gale. I'm the Executive Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia. I'm here today on behalf of Council President, accepting the resolution, and I just want to say thank you. This is very touching. I'm a transplant to Philadelphia. I love this city. I moved here about 13 years ago in an effort to really try to make my mark on the city and help the city be a better place. And I see allies here on council, both my right and my left. And over the last year and a half, having joined the Bicycle Coalition to lead them and bring in a different perspective, not being from Philadelphia, being a Latino, having grown up poor, and having to make my way through the world, this is a touching honor. So thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council Members, for your support. I look forward to working with you in the years beyond, and I really just appreciate all of it. Thank you.
Mr. Gale, you can stay there at the podium for a second. The chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to thank Councilmember Gadiere for introducing the resolution on your behalf, and thank you for your leadership, Council President. And of course, say thank you to Chris. I just wanted to acknowledge that there are times when people ask us as council members of the most difficult parts of our job. And I remember gathering with Chris and others, I believe it was in your council district, Councilmember Gadiere, and they were doing advocacy work around all of the people who had lost their lives riding a bicycle in the city of Philadelphia. And it wasn't just pitchers. They brought out loved ones as well, too. And when you listen to loved ones talk about losing their mother, brother, father, sister, so many varieties, so many socioeconomic status, this is an issue that touches all classes, all neighborhoods, and all people across the city of Philadelphia. If you don't know, in 2020, we seen a record number of hit and runs here in the city of Philadelphia, and it was folks like Chris and other organizations who worked with members of City Council to advocate for a lot of change, to the point where we've seen those incidents curve significantly. So Council President, thank you for your leadership. Colley, thank you for the work that you've done around this issue. I know you're very passionate about it. And Chris, to you and your team, thank you for the countless hours of advocacy, the countless number of meetings, and all the great work that you've done. I'll close out by saying this, Council President, this is one of those issues where as though we'll never know how many lives we save based on the work that we've done. So thank you. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gortier.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to add my voice to my colleagues in recognizing Chris Gale and his leadership. He's someone who has had a background in system change, both in the nonprofit and government sector, and he's brought that same spirit to the Bicycle Coalition. I've been especially impressed with the Bicycle Coalition's advocacy in the past year or so, particularly around tragic deaths like that of Barbara Frides. You know, the Bicycle Coalition has been one of the loudest voices, reminding everyone in the city that traffic deaths are not inevitable, and that we should be using infrastructure to make sure that everyone is safe on our roads. Their advocacy has helped the council to move forward key initiatives like the Get Out the Bike Lane Bill. And, you know, they've pushed on Vision Zero, making sure that it is properly resourced. They helped me in my district with the 47th Street Bike Lane, and I just want to thank Chris for his leadership and advocacy, which is working. We just heard Councilman Thomas talk about what 2020 looked like, but 2025 has seen traffic deaths trending down, and I fully believe that that is in large part due to the efforts of the Bicycle Coalition, especially under Chris's leadership. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I just want to say thank you, Chris, for your hard work, your dedication, your leadership, your advocacy around the $5 million for Vision Zero to make sure we continue moving forward and making sure the city of Philadelphia is a more bicyclist and pedestrian-friendly city, as well as your advocacy as we worked yesterday in Hopoka, New Jersey, a city that hasn't seen a traffic death since 2017. And so when we talk about issues like around daylighting and making sure that bills such as the Get Out the Bike Lane Bill, and most important, looking at the issue of daylighting, but also I think people don't know or recognize, at least I didn't know, under any previous administrations or leadership, that the work that the Bicycle Coalition do with young African-American children regarding bicycles. We have a program that's in all neighborhoods across the city of Philadelphia, helping children who do not have bikes get bikes, learn how to fix their bikes, right? And most importantly, use their bikes all throughout the city of Philadelphia. So thank you for your leadership, Chris, and it's always good to see you. Thank you. Chief Clerk, please call the next speaker, please.
Mari Gonzalez, Sarah Glover. We have Robert Sims, Shirley Dash, Michael Galvin, May Reverend Gregory Holston, and Obonahagans also make their way to the podium.
My name is Shirley Dash. Thank you, Council President Johnson, for this opportunity, and thank you, Councilmember Landau, for introducing this resolution honoring the Alzheimer's Association and recognizing our commitment to research, advocacy, and support for those impacted by dementia and their families. My mother was diagnosed with this disease at the age of 66. She lived with this for the last 12 years of her life. She died in 2012. I not only advocate in her honor, but for those who are no longer able to speak for themselves. It is estimated that 34,000 people aged 65 and older in Philadelphia are living with Alzheimer's, a figure that does not account for those who are undiagnosed. While these numbers are only increasing, we know that rising public awareness about dementia will aid in early detection and diagnoses. It will reduce stigma, and it will ensure that those who need support know where to turn. One of the largest and most impactful moments for us locally, which raises considerable public awareness, is the Philadelphia Walk to End Alzheimer's, held annually in more than 600 communities nationwide. The Walk to Alzheimer's is the world's largest fundraiser for Alzheimer's care. In fact, the funds raised directly help to advance critical care, support, and research. On November 8th, 2025, we will host the Philadelphia Walk, which has been the number two walk in the country for the last several years. This event brings together upwards of 7,000 individuals at Citizens Bank Park for inspiring and powerful event where participants honor loved ones. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Council President Kenyatta Johnson. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you.
And good morning to the council members. I was not scheduled to speak. I'm speaking using the time for Sarah Glover, who couldn't make it today. But I wanted to just talk to you a little bit about Michael Daze. You know, he was a mentor and friend. I wanted to say, he was someone who had an incredible network, a network that connected me with you when I worked for you briefly. He was a, I think he's important, not because he's just important to journalism, but I wanted to say to people that he was a man with, as I said, just an incredible network, quiet, humble, powerful. And he always used his power for good. He always uplifted other people, and he always saw potential in people. I'm sorry. He always saw potential in people, especially young people of color, who may not have gotten opportunities in these newsrooms that are, where there are not very many people who look like us. And, you know, it's just so important. who look like us. And, you know, it's just so important. So, I just wanted to make sure people understood and knew that him, how he lived, what he did, was so much bigger than any one person. And just an incredible individual. And I wanted to say that we are going to bury the man soon, but I hope that everyone, everyone will remember the plan. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Council President Johnson and members of City Council. My name is Michael Galvin, and I am here to speak in support of Councilmember Landau's resolution honoring the Alzheimer's Association's 2025 Walk to End Alzheimer's here in Philadelphia. While you have previously heard from me on numerous issues facing our city, I am here today because of a personal connection to dementia, my grandmother. We also know her lovingly as Mima or Adalita, Little Adela. Her strength, passion, and determination helped shape me into the person many of you know today. Mima has been fighting her dementia for two years now. As you have heard, on November 8th, 2025, we will host the Philadelphia Walk at Citizens Bank Park, which has been the second-largest walk in the country for the last several years. This year, I have participated in walks all across the Commonwealth, from the Lehigh Valley to Pittsburgh and everywhere in between. These walks, each unique and inspirational in their own rights, have driven myself, volunteers, advocates, and those impacted by this disease to continue fighting for treatment and ultimately the end to Alzheimer's and all other dementias. As our incredible advocate and volunteer Chaplain Shirley Dash just stated, we are honored to have the ability to partner with our community to help shine a light on this disease, its impact on Philadelphia residents, and the importance of community engagement and awareness in the Walk to End Alzheimer's. On November 8th, I will participate in my first Philadelphia Walk to End Alzheimer's. I will walk for Mima. At our walks, participants carry a flower symbolizing their connection to Alzheimer's or other dementias. This year, I'm going to carry the yellow flower for Mima, symbolizing my care and support of her and her journey. And while each of these colored flowers means something different, purple for those who have lost a loved one with the disease, orange for those who support the mission of a world without Alzheimer's and all other dementia, and blue for those living with the disease, we are all bound together in one common journey to end Alzheimer's once and for all. This hope is symbolized by the white flower at our pre-walk ceremony, representing the cure, representing survival. Thank you again, members of Philadelphia City Council, for your ongoing support for our mission and the community impacted by Alzheimer's and other dementias. We urge you to support Councilmember Landau's resolution today. Thank you.
We have Reverend Greg Holston, Obona Hagens, May Rabbi Mordechai Liebling, Audrey Kohl's, and Deborah Horn also make their way to the podium.
Hi, sorry. Good morning, good afternoon. Good morning, Council members. My name is Mari Daliin Gonzalez, and I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the outstanding leadership of Chris Gale, Executive Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia. Since stepping into his role at the Bicycle Coalition, Chris Gale has helped transform how Philadelphia approaches transportation safety, access, and equity. Under his guidance, the city has seen miles of new upgraded bike lanes and stronger no-stopping any-time protections and growing investments in corridors that connect neighborhoods. His advocacy has made our streets safer for everyone, whether you bike, walk, take transit, or drive. Chris has helped see the true diversity of the biking community, including the often invisible riders who rely on their bikes not just for sport, but as their primary means to get to and from work. His leadership reminds us that biking is not just recreational, it's transportation, it's economic mobility, and dignity in motion. Beyond the street, he also serves as Vice President of LULAC Philly, a chapter of the oldest and largest Latino civil rights organization. Through his work at LULAC, Chris has helped register voters and encourage civic participation in neighborhoods with some of the lowest turnouts. He understands that safer streets and stronger democracy go hand in hand. Both are about giving people the freedom to move, to be seen, and to be heard. Chris Gale represents the kind of leadership Philadelphia needs, collaborative, equity-driven, grounded in community. Our city is safer, more connected, and more civically engaged because of his vision and his dedication. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Reverend Gregory Holston. Very moved by all the presentations today. Thankful for all of the Black reporters who are here, some of my heroes, celebrating the life of Michael Days and so many others who are here today. I come here today to lift up the life of Rabbi Arthur Waschke. As the Executive Director for a time of the organization called Power, a multiracial, multi-faith organization, I was privileged to be able to have relationships and build relationships to many in the Jewish community. They let me in to share their hurt, their pain, and their lives. And Rabbi Waschke was one of those individuals who would reach out to me and share his vision for this world. We remember him as a fearless prophet of our time, a rabbi who refused to separate the sacred from the struggle. From the moment he linked the story of the Exodus to the Black Freedom Movement called the Freedom Seder in 1969, Rabbi Waschke lived out of faith that acts, a theology that marches, a spirituality that speaks truth to power. He spoke out for our earth long before it was popular and when others stayed silent. He spoke out for justice in Israel and Palestine long before it was safe and popular and suffered for it. Yet, he never wavered. He believed that the God of Abraham and Sarah, the God of Moses and Miriam, calls us to stand with the oppressed wherever they may be. Rabbi Waschke walked in the same moral lineage as the Black church prophets of Dr. King and Fannie Lou Hamer and Howard Thurman, who declared the gospel demands justice, not comfort. And like them, he knew that faith without courage is hollow, and real peace is born only from truth and compassion. He showed us the Passover cry, "Let my people go," is the same cry heard in Montgomery, in Soweto, in Gaza, a cry for freedom, dignity, and life abundant for every child of God. So, I thank you today for celebrating his life and giving me an opportunity to lift up this great hero that lived among us. Thank you so much.
I am Rabbi Mordechai Liebling. I thank you, Council President, and I thank Councilmembers O'Rourke and Landau for introducing this resolution. In the Jewish tradition, there is a biblical passage associated with every week. In the week that Arthur was born in 1933, it was from the Book of Isaiah that says, "God goes forth like a warrior, like a fighter. God whips up rage, yells, and roars." And that is the perfect description of Rabbi Waschke. He roared for justice wherever he was. In 1968, in Washington, DC, he came face-to-face with the US Army in the wake of the rebellion sparked by the assassination of Dr. King. Seeing those troops in the streets, he said, "This is Pharaoh's army." And then he wrote the Freedom Seder that created a new pathway for Judaism. In that single audacious act, Rabbi Waschke rewove the story of liberation with a Black freedom struggle and the universal cry for justice. The Freedom Seder was not just a ritual innovation, it was a spiritual earthquake. It showed us that Judaism is not a museum of memory, but a living covenant of action. That "Let my people go" means all people in every generation. At the 1964 Democratic Convention, he worked with Fannie Lou Hamer and with Dr. King to try to get the Mississippi Freedom Democratic Party seated. Though his efforts failed, he worked hard. In 1968, at the Democratic Party Convention, he introduced the first, he nominated the first Black man ever in American history to be President of the United States, Reverend Channing, who was a reverend in Washington, DC at the time, and then went out into the streets to try to protect the protesters from the police. In our fair city, he gathered faith leaders from many traditions, creating dialogue, creating opportunities for faith leaders to work across lines for freedom and justice in Philadelphia for many years. And I am proud to be his student and his friend, and I am very grateful for this resolution today. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Obona Hagens. I'm a fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor, and I'm the President of the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen. I want to commend this council for honoring the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center School and 20 biannual years of the CARTDAM program. But real change doesn't come from them. It comes from us, from the systems we build, the opportunities we provide, and whether we finally raise the estate of the American freedmen. This Sunday marks 30 years since the Million Man March, when Minister Louis Farrakhan called on men to take responsibility and rebuild families and communities. That same spirit is alive here today. If our young brothers and sisters are truly, truly to seize their day, this city must remove all modern badges, vestiges, and incidents of slavery that produces the poverty and the crime and the incarceration that we're often complaining about. Raising the estate means creating the policies, programs, and protections our ancestors were promised, including the Office of Freedman Affairs, which is your responsibility to create, whether we have hearings or not. It's a Fourteenth Amendment equal protection issue. There are offices for everyone else. There has to be an office for American freedmen, the ones who saved this nation and built this city. Can you imagine there's no office for them? That group of people who's at the bottom in this office will solve their problems. Come out to the Million Man March this Sunday, while the men of Philadelphia will unify on raising the estate of the American freedmen. Obona Hagens, over and out.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Deb Hong. Good morning to Council President Johnson and City Council members. I'm speaking on behalf of Philly Bike Action. We'd like to thank you for the resolution honoring Chris Gale. Often in news articles, Philly Bike Action and Bicycle Coalition get confused, and we are honored to be allies in the fight, and it's definitely not bad to be confused with each other. Although PBA just turned two years old this April, Bicycle Coalition has had a long history of advocacy for, on behalf of bicyclists. We are honored to be allied in the fight for safer streets with Chris and the rest of the Coalition. And in the recent years, when Chris has been the leader, we have seen his passionate emphasis on equality, diversity, and community building. I think that's especially important in this space. He's an inspiration to all of us, and on a personal level, he's just a nice guy and super fun to hang out with. So, the last time we talked, he kind of regretted when he testified and got a little choked up when he was talking about being able to get home safely to his kids. And I was like, you know, that's really what's important at the end of the day, to get home safely. So, I'd like to thank Councilmember Thomas for your remarks regarding, you know, this is an issue affecting everyone in every district, including District 5, where I live. I'm hoping to see safe streets in that neighborhood as well after our upcoming open hall. Thank you, Jamie Gaultier, for your leadership on Vision Zero and all the great bike lanes going into your district. And thank you, KJ. We saw your visit to Hoboken yesterday, and we're very inspired by the Vision Zero.
You said KJ?
Sorry. I'm sorry. Council President Johnson, that slipped out. But on behalf of Philly Bike Action, thank you for this resolution, and thank you for honoring Chris Gale.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, I will. Good morning. My name is Audrey Kohl's, and I am a committee woman for the 43rd Ward, 24th Division, and I am here today in support of the amended zoning bill being introduced by Councilmember Jeffrey Young, Jr. And on that behalf, the community and I would like to extend our appreciation for the guidance and just the support that he provided, as well as Mr. Nathan Grace from the Planning District 3, for helping us to navigate through the remapping and rezoning of our area. With that in mind, I'm anticipating that this particular mapping process has become successful and that it goes through, and that the community that came out today, we learned a valuable lesson in the processes of zoning and the steps in order to revitalize our community. So, thank you very much for your time, your effort, and your support.
Thank you.
We have Kate Perez.
I'm Kate Perez. Thinking about the 460 million in committed or expended funds to rebuild community centers in Philadelphia, and it makes me think of the estimated 70 billion it would cost to rebuild all of Gaza, a place that's about the same size as Philadelphia with double the people and mostly made up of children, with 93% of the population having no access to clean water. Our rebuilding money is coming from the beverage tax, but who's going to pay for Gaza's historic libraries and their own flattened community centers? How can we continue to partner with the occupation that bragged about dropping 153 tons of munitions on civilians just on Sunday, one of their more than 80 ceasefire violations, having already killed at least 97 Palestinians since signing the agreement, with 230 wounded in their airstrikes and even more dying in the streets from the cold, dying from their forced starvation, and dying from the lack of medical access, with medical professionals being rounded up and held hostage, like Dr. Hassan Abu Sophia, having his illegal detention extended another six months despite being on the release list. Philadelphia has more than 400 community sites needing attention, and money that should have been benefiting Americans is instead used to slaughter and to detain Palestinians. The UN estimates it would take about 80 years to rebuild Gaza, but the natives say it shouldn't take that long if we make real efforts to stop their illegal blockade. Since March, our sister city has blocked all food, water, and anything from entering Palestine, punishing and starving the entire population. Surgeries and births are performed without anesthesia. It's unnatural for children to be kept awake during their amputations. It's unnatural that Israel has created a country with the most child amputees in the world, and it's unnatural to continue our partnership as we watch this genocide unfold. The United Nations Environmental Program estimated 2.3 million tons of Gaza's rubble is contaminated with asbestos. With human bodies still trapped in the rubble, their decomposition is spreading disease and contaminating groundwater. Rescue workers we honored in these chambers are shot at when trying to retrieve the bodies. Again, they have violated every ceasefire and will continue to do so until we stop sending them the weapons. Free Palestine.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
That concludes today's public comment. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. Would Clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250892?
A resolution approving the rebuild project statement for fiscal year 2026 pursuant to Bill Number 170206.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of Parks and Recreation, Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips, for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250892.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Dr. Anthony Phillips, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved appropriate second. If the Resolution Number 250892 be adopted, all those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a Clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250892?
Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250897?
A resolution renaming the 1300 block of North 52nd Street as Dr. Demone B. Jones Way in recognition of Dr. Demone B. Jones, Sr., for his exceptional service to the West Philadelphia community.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr., for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250897.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The Resolution Number 250897 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of 250493-A?
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Ninth Street, Erie Avenue, and Broad Street.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson? Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250654?
An ordinance amending Chapter 17-1600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans to add two additional business community members to the Economic Opportunity Review Committee, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are fifteen, the nays are one. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250718-A?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12-900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Parking Regulations and Penalties to confirm regulations adopted by the Department of Streets that establish and revise time limited and other rules restricting parking, stopping, and standing, including the establishment of time-restricted loading zones in the center-city area bounded by Spring Garden Street, the Schuylkill River, Bainbridge Street, and the Delaware River, and to reauthorize changes and additions to such parking rules in the center-city area by the Department of Streets to an ongoing basis, on an ongoing basis, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Council President, I want to, I vote aye, but I want to, my, the last vote should have been a nay. My apologies for 250654.
So for the record officially, Bill Number 250654 will be fourteen ayes and two nays for the record. We'll go back to Chief Clerk, the title of Bill Number 250718-A. The bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? That's my bill. Let me know. Any objections? Would a chief clerk please read the bill, please?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12-900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Parking Regulations and Penalties to confirm regulations adopted by the Department of Streets that establish and revise time limited and other rules restricting parking, stopping, and standing, including the establishment of time-restricted loading zones in the center-city area bounded by Spring Garden Street, the Schuylkill River, Bainbridge Street, and the Delaware River, and to reauthorize changes and additions to such parking rules in the center-city area by the Department of Streets on an ongoing basis, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk? Thank you. Would a chief clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Kada Scott, a beacon of light and love in Philadelphia remembered for her faith, kindness, and countless lives she touched. Introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President.
Well, I didn't acknowledge you yet. One second. Excuse me, counsel, bad idea. Chair recognizes Member Phillips for a motion on a resolution, and we're gonna do a standing voice vote. I'm sorry, a standing moment of silence for, on her behalf.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution on behalf of all the Philadelphians who have been touched by Ms. Kada Scott.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips, for your patience. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Michael I. Daze for his extensive career as a reporter and editor for the Philadelphia Daily News and later as Vice President for Diversity and Inclusion at the Philadelphia Inquirer. Introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Council President Johnson.
I'm gonna ask for Member Thomas to make a motion on the resolution, and we also do a standing silent vote.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, and listening to the public comment here, I think it's appropriate that we move for the adoption of the resolution and do so by standing vote.
Chief Clerk, please read the title of the next resolution, please.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Power 99's Rise and Grind Morning Show for its lasting contributions to radio and the cultural fabric of the city of Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of our majority leader, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Chris Gale, Executive Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia, for his exemplary work and advocacy in ensuring the safety and inclusivity of cyclists throughout Pennsylvania. Introduced by Councilmember Gautier, by Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gautier for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Atlantic Center for Capital Representation and its staff for 15 years of dedicated service addressing systemic issues with the death penalty in Pennsylvania and across the nation. Introduced by Councilmember Thomas on behalf of Council President Johnson.
Thank you very much. Chief Clerk, the chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President, on your behalf, and thank you for your leadership. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating the Mural Arts Program and recognizing the month of October as Mural Arts Month in the city of Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. In continuing this tradition, I move for the adoption of the resolution as we celebrate Mural Arts.
Very well done. It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold a hearing to examine the city of Philadelphia's strategies, laws, and policies for protecting victims of abuse and domestic violence within the justice system, including the courts, the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office, and the Philadelphia Police Department. Introduced by Councilmember Jones on behalf of Council President Johnson.
Chief Clerk, the chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr., for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Member Jones, it threw me off a little bit because you've been working on this topic way before today. So we're gonna continue doing a good work together as we move forward protecting those who are victims of domestic violence and those who are victims of abuse. So thank you for your work. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution commemorating and honoring the 2025 Philadelphia Walk to End Alzheimer's for mobilizing thousands of Philadelphians in the ongoing fight against Alzheimer's through advocacy, research, and community care. Introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Council Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings to investigate the city's payment and refund systems for municipal taxes. Introduced by Councilmember Young.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I want to ask for a suspension of the rules to re-record my vote on Bill Number 250654.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the rules of council have been suspended to rescind your vote.
Thank you so much, Council President.
Would a chief clerk please read the title? The chair recognizes Councilmember?
No, I'm sorry.
You were a nay, ain't you on that?
I'm a nay. She said I have to say that I'm voting nay. I want to re-record my vote as nay on Bill Number 250654.
Thank you very much.
54. Thank you.
It is duly noted. Thank you very much. But it's still two nos, correct?
Yes.
But it's done properly, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, my majority leader. Making sure we doing things as my nana say, in decency and in order. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Rabbi, author Ocean Waschow, a prophetic activist and author grounded in Jewish tradition and faith who created the foundation on which generations of moral activists stand. Introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke for a motion on a resolution.
In honor of a great prophet and mystic, I do stand for the, what am I saying?
You're making a motion on a resolution.
I'm moving for the adoption of the resolution in his honor. Thank you.
See, that's what happened. You a new dad. I get it, bruh. It's okay. I ain't sleep.
Sleepless, give me last night.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Reverend Carolyn Clarine Cavaness for the one-year anniversary of her pastoral appointment at the historical Mother Bethel AME Church. Introduced by Councilmember Squilla on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of the resolution on your behalf.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing and congratulating the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 98 on the momentous occasion of its 125th anniversary, celebrating over a century of exemplary leadership, advocacy, and unwavering dedication to the rights and welfare of electrical workers. Introduced by Councilmember Squilla on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of a resolution on your behalf.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the extraordinary contributions and lifetime achievements of Dr. Malefi Keti Asanti, founder of the Afrocentricity and founder of the Malefi Keti Asanti MKA Institute for Afrocentric Studies in the Germantown Neighborhood. Introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings to examine the impacts of the current crisis threatening the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, and Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Education, SNAP Ed, on food and nutrition security in Philadelphia, including barriers to assessing benefits, disruptions to nutrition education and outreach, consequences for residents, and opportunities for coordinated city and community response. Introduced by Councilmember Ahmad on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma, Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, for a motion on a resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing and affirming the city of Philadelphia's commitment to public health grounded in scientific evidence and opposing state proposals that would weaken proven protections, including childhood immunizations, community water fluoridation, and practical steps that limit the spread of disease in schools. Introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority that chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks?
Thank you so much, Council President. Um, first, as a mother of four daughters, I would like to acknowledge this deep sadness and anger that many of us are feeling in the wake of Kada Scott's murder. And I'm praying for her family and friends as they grieve. I am committed to working with all of our partners to make sure that our safe, our city is safer for all women. Next, I would like to give an explanation on why I voted no on a bill to add two business representatives to the Equal Opportunity Review Committee. I'm not exposed, opposed to expanding the EORC and adding more diverse voices, but this bill gives more seats to business interests without adding more seats for representative of workers. Under the current structure, business and labor have equal representation on the EOC, EORC. Each group has two members. By adding two members to represent business interest, this gives businesses twice as many representatives as labor, which diminishes the roles of unions and working families in making important decisions about economic opportunities in our city. I'm not opposed to adding more members to the EORC, but it must be done fairly so that both businesses and labor have equal representation. And I had this conversation already with the bill sponsor, so it was not a surprise. It was mine not paying attention. I'm gonna be full transparent that I missed it. That's what I was supposed to do. Um, I also want to take a moment to thank everyone who took part in Wingahockin Neighbors Day. Um, I was so overwhelmed last week with all that was happening. Um, after a difficult year in Nice Town where I live and where I'm from, um, from the murder of L G B Q in May to the deadly explosion in June, it also impacted us here in council. This event was especially meaningful to me and my neighbors. Over a hundred community partners showed up in Nice Town with resources, food, music, and care. We had ten local food trucks and small businesses on the street and provided thirteen hundred free meals, and we had a record clearing clinic, free haircuts, activities for children, two stages, and over a dozen amazing performances in honor of Qwa. I want to extend a special thank you to councilmembers Isaiah Thomas and Jim Harity. Your support helped to make this the biggest and best Wingahockin Day yet. And I also want to thank Council President Johnson and councilmembers O'Rourke and Landau and Phillips for showing up in Nice Town to help me celebrate my community. One of the main goals of Wingahockin Neighbors Day is to bring resources directly to the community, so that people can take advantage of the programs and services and opportunities that our city has to offer. We know that there are a lot of resources available online, but some folks, especially our seniors, prefer to have the information on paper. That is why my office has also created several resource guides to share with constituents. These are available online at my council webpage and as a hard copy has been placed on each one of your desks. The Youth Opportunity Guide 2.0 is in addition to my office's first youth opportunity guide, and it provides resources especially for younger children and adults, as recommended by my interns when they realized that certain things weren't available for young adults and those that are transitioning into adulthood. The next one is the Food Access Guide. The Food Access Guide has information on community fridges, soup kitchens, free groceries, and meal programs in Philadelphia. With thousands of families set to lose SNAP benefits due to federal government shutdown, these resources will be particularly important in the coming weeks. Please share widely and reach out to my staff if you have any questions or you need additional copies. And lastly, my staff and my office has reached out to many of you about our annual Spooktacular event at John Heinz Wildlife Center. Every year, hundreds of families come out to enjoy the interactive nature exhibits, archery lessons, fall crafts, costume, trails of tree, and so much fun. Yesterday, my office learned that we will have to cancel Spooktacular this year due to the federal government shutdown. The staff at the refuge have been on, have been furloughed and do not have access to their email accounts. Meanwhile, ICE agents are still getting paid for separating families. Parents can't buy groceries for their kids. This is another clear example why we must take a stronger stance against this Trump administration. The people who are most impacted by this shutdown are not politicians or elected leaders. They are children in our communities, and we all have a responsibility to speak up for them. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. In this political climate, in this day and age, there's been, it's almost hard to find people who have rooted or principled political positions. I'm not talking necessarily in this chamber generally, but we see on social media. It's a lot of, a lot of backbiting and talking. But historically, uh, what it meant to be left wasn't just progressive or identity-based. It meant labor. Uh, that's what historically, as a, as a, as a political position throughout history, the left was labor-based. And so for that reason, I stand with my minority leader on the positions that we took today. And I thank folks for understanding that. That having been said, I also want to acknowledge that today I introduced a resolution with Councilmember Rue Landau to honor the life of one Rabbi Arthur Ocean Waschow. As I breathe out what the trees breathe in, as the trees breathe in what I breathe out, as we breathe in each other, God breathes in all of us and breathes us out. Rabbi Arthur Waschow taught that the name of God, Yahweh, was a breath. No vows in that word. It was breath. Breath is life, and he taught us how interconnected we all were, both with each other and with the ecology of the world, that we are all one. He was born in 1933. He died this past Monday, October 20th, just a couple days after his 92nd birthday. Lifelong activist, in part because of his activist background. His father was a labor organizer. His mother and grandfather were active in voter registrating in political camps and campaigns. We had the honor of hearing today Reverend Gregory Holston, former Executive Director of Power. We heard from Rabbi Mordecai Liebling, a great giant within, uh, the Jewish community. And we also had in attendance Rabbi Nate DeGroot, who is now the Executive Director of the Shalom Center, a organization that Rabbi Arthur Waschow founded. Um, who were all here and also were yesterday, uh, in person at the funeral that was held at Mishkan Shalom in his honor. This is a man who bred and helped stimulate a resistance movement. He resisted, just to count the roll, war, for example. He fiercely opposed Vietnam to the point of making pu- public appeals to dodge the draft and refusing to pay taxes. I'm talking about real resistance, things that's gonna shake stuff up. He, he resisted antisemitism, right? He never stopped defending Jewish people and resolutely understood the mission of communal preservation as deeply related to the Judaic concept of Takunulam, of repairing the world. Xenophobia he resisted, perhaps because of his history, threat, and reality of exile for Jewish peoples. He was a stark opponent of the immigration policy of political parties. Remember, you were once strangers in the land of Egypt. This is what he stood for. He was arrested in the eight, in his eighties, right? Eighty-year-old man protesting the Obama administration for its rampant deportation policies. Many know that as much as we may like President Obama, folks recognize him as deporter in chief. Principal positions that he stood on. He also resisted so many other societal ills, ranging from apartheid in Israel as well as South Africa, to war in Iraq, to homophobia, to the recent genocidal war in Gaza that has devastated and shaken to the core American Jewish life. He knew the mosaic mantra, "Let my people go," meant for everybody. That's who Rabbi Arthur Waschow was. So, it is my honor to, 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 to know, uh, to have known him, to know of, and to occasionally be in community with him and with those faith leaders who seek what Rabbi Arthur Waschow sought, renewal. He may have actually coined the term Jewish renewal. This is the kind of giant we're talking about, who with care and clarity offer reinterpretation for what liberation may mean for each generation. Though there are always particularities, this work to renew exists across faiths. It's a religious tradition as I see it, and one I hope to fruitfully contribute to in my ministry, in my work, in my life, uh, for the days that the Lord allows me to live. A giant like Rabbi Waschow is a shining example of the faith it takes to take on how faith is supposed to look. I salute and I thank him. I pray that his memory, and I know it is, is a profound, profound blessing for those that walk in the tradition. Thank you. Further, um, we've already honored her, and I, and I thank Dr. Anthony Phillips, Antony, as Jimmy likes to call you, um, for his leadership. And I appreciate you, Council President, for allowing us to take a moment of standing silence. Um, it's so hard to know what to say in moments like this as we consider the life of Kada Scott. Um, but it is a month where we recognize domestic violence, right? And each year, an organization that this body holds close. In fact, it was the first event I went to, coming back from parental leave, um, Women Against Abuse, um, implores us to take a particular pledge, a pledge against the culture in which Kada Scott's story could unfold and all the tragedy that it has. A pledge that all of us need to be clear on, but in this moment, I know this to be so true for our young brothers. So, to them, but of course, to anyone listening, I hope the words of this pledge resonate and cause reflection, because we need reflection in light of this. The pledge reads, "I pledge to take action as an advocate for healthy relationships. I will believe survivors of relationship abuse and amplify the voices of those who have been silenced." And this is the part that proves, that moves, uh, from advocacy for someone else to fighting to build a new culture. The pledge closes with this, "I will actively work against oppression and commit to being part of the change needed to create a community that is safe and just for every person." That ain't just flowery language. That is a call to action, to be the change we wish to see and to make the world that we ought to be making, in the words of Rabbi Arthur Waschow, to help heal the world. What are we doing to help heal it? Amen, 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 and a she to another young Philadelphian gone too soon. We call her name Kada Scott. Pray Philly. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. I ask to be excused to take care of other council business.
Thank you very much. You are excused. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finally, I beat fast finger Phillips to the button.
Did you say I'll be?
Finally. I figured it out. I figured it out. Um, two things. One, an announcement, uh, and two, a question to my colleague Isaiah Thomas, so he knows the question in advance. Um, first, thirty years ago, hundreds of buses were loaded by men of color for the Million Man March. It was transformative in many ways to see that many African Americans that close together without a curse word, without a fight, without a murder, without... People rushed to apologize when someone stepped on your foot. "No, brother, I'm sorry." That kind of spirit permeated over the approximate one million men when we got to Washington, D.C. We hope to honor that anniversary Sunday, 12:30, from different locations. And in the flyer, it says this, around the way. We will be assembling at Broad and Master in North Philadelphia in your district. We will be assembling at 30th and Market in West Philly in Jamie and, in Jamie Gautier's district. We will be assembling at Broad and Christian in South Philadelphia, to assemble at Love Park to kind of commemorate what happened. It's a run, it's a walk, it's whatever way you can get there by Uber. But it is to recognize the timeliness of this 30th anniversary that it's, it's, it was started then based on a feeling of oppression from Washington. And it's, anniversary falls on that same feeling of oppression coming from Washington. So, it's time for us to recalibrate and recommit, uh, to an agenda that we need to kind of move forward. Um, I always said, no matter what we were going through in this chamber, that if you want to clean up the world, start under your own feet. And I think that, um, uh, acknowledgement to organizations, uh, like sororities, uh, the Coalition of a Hundred Black Women, um, uh, the Links and others that have kind of run circles around us men. And it's time for us to catch up, uh, with this celebration. So, please join us 12:30 from those locations. The question on the floor, Mr. President, from when we used to do these meetings online during COVID, we always, before the, the, the actual, uh, meeting, was to turn to Coach Isaiah Thomas to get his perspective on those 76ers. So, I want to do that and yield the rest of my time to ask them, "Did you see the game last night?"
The chair recognizes Coach Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I have my remarks that I'll save for a little later, but, um, I do miss political sports talk. I think that's what we used to call it.
Every morning.
That was our virtual tradition. Um, at that time, we were pretty terrible as it relates to sports teams. Sorry to all of our sports teams. But we're in a totally different place right now, so it's a pleasure, uh, to see the game last night, watch some of our rookies. And, um, you know, I think in a serious note, sports brings us together as a city, right? I think, um, anybody who knows us knows that the Eagles Parade this past year was one of the best moments for a lot of Philadelphians, you say, safety around 2020, 2017. And so, it's good to see all three of our major sports teams doing well. Hopefully, we'll add a fourth with the Flyers and someday a fifth with the WNBA team that's coming on the horizon. So, thank you, Councilmen. We're in a great space right now, and it was a great game to watch last night.
Thanks for the commentary, sir. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I, colleagues and, and those in attendance, I just want to celebrate the life of, uh, Kada Scott. And I want to thank all of our colleagues who, uh, together, um, sponsored this, this resolution to honor her life and legacy. Um, Kada was a young woman whose light and kindness reflected the very best of us, Philadelphia. She was a daughter, intelligent, creative, faithful, full of promise. She dreamed boldly about what she can build for herself and her family. At just nineteen years old, she opened her own beauty spa right in Mount Airy. She was a neighbor of 19150. She had vision and determination. She believed in the power of self-care, community, and purpose, using her gifts to pour love into the people around her. But what made Kada truly special was not what she just did, not, not just what she did, but who she was. Her family remembers her gentle spirit and bright smile that can warm any room. They shared that she was the kind of person who made others feel seen, who reminded you of your worth, and who carried joy wherever she went. Her story has touched so many because it feels deeply personal. Kada was our sister, our daughter, our friend. She represents the bright, kind, driven, young people who fill our neighborhood with life and hope. And when this tragedy struck, um, it reminded Philadelphia how connected she was to, to us. So, as her family grieves, we're reminded that Kada's life is not defined by what happened, but, but the, but by the love and light she shared while she was here. Her legacy... Her legacy is one of compassion, calling us to look out for one another, to keep believing in the good, and to keep building the kind world she deserved to live in. So in her honor, at the request and support of her family, our office continues to collect donations through this Saturday. October, we will be, our office is open from tomorrow from 8:30 to 4:30 PM, and then on Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 1514 Waziriff Avenue. We're collecting self-care items, gift cards, as well as non-perishable items for the family. And also keep in mind that there's a 17-year-old daughter. So if there's anything that you could think about for her daughter as she prepares, Kada's sister, as she prepares for college, show that kindness as much as you can. What Kada's family said she wanted for us was to continue loving, giving, and uniting beyond this moment. So today, we don't just remember Kada, but we could commit to living as she did, with a heart that believes in people. And so to Kim, Kada's mother, Kevin, Kada's father, and Kada's sister, I'm so deeply sorry for what has happened, but also notice, Kada's name will continue to be spoken and her story will continue to be told. And as the late Congressman John Lewis reminded us, we must continue to make good trouble, necessary trouble, in the name of what is right. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And just want to clarify, on behalf of Member Jones, the gathering for the march on Sunday, it starts at 8:00 AM at those particular locations. Broad and Christian in South Philadelphia, 30th and Market in West Philadelphia, and in North Philadelphia, Broad and Master, just for the record. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce legislation to honor Dr. Malefe K. Asante, a visionary whose intellect and commitment have reshaped how the world understands Africa and its people. Dr. Asante is internationally recognized as the founder of Afrocentricity and has given a voice to a framework that reclaims African agency, reshaping scholarship, and affirming dignity, culture, and identity for millions. From establishing the nation's first PhD program in African-American studies at Temple University to mentoring over 140 doctoral scholars, his legacy is reflected in the generations of thinkers he has inspired. His more than 100 books and 500 articles have made him one of the most cited African scholars in the world. And in my neighborhood, through the Malefe K. Asante Institute for Afrocentric Studies, he continues to advance global understanding and local empowerment. Although he was not able to make it today, we proudly recognize Dr. Asante and his wife for their outstanding and extraordinary achievements, his lifelong service to scholarship, and his enduring contributions to the world. We are planning to have a presentation in the near future so that folks can meet and greet with Dr. Asante and learn more about the work that they are, he and his wife are doing at the center on Germantown Avenue. And I want to thank everyone for co-sponsoring. And I wanted to just say, just very briefly, as we talk about the Million Man March, the anniversary of it, and we also talk about Kada Scott and the tragedy that has unfolded before all of us, that it's never been more important that we get our young men together. There is a vulnerability that women, and I will say specifically, black women of all ages, that there is a vulnerability that exists. And protection is needed, protection is important. You know, what we do and how we handle our situations or our community, there's just so much to be done. And so I want to just put that on the hearts and minds of everyone who's attending the Million Man March gatherings this weekend. And again, my condolences to the Scott family for their loss. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilman Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an announcement for anybody who have RSP to the Reading Terminal Tour from council members, and lunch will be starting at 1:00 PM today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dr. Nina Maad.
Thank you, Council President. Before anything else, I echo what my colleagues have said, that we are all heartbroken about the murder of Kada Scott. As a mother of two young women, my heart is with her mother. I send my prayers to her parents and offer my deepest condolences to Kada's family, friends, and loved ones, and to our city that had hoped for a very different outcome. And then moving on, I wanted to talk about the resolution that I introduced today. Science matters. As a scientist, by training, I will always defend science and data-backed evidence because they save lives, guide smart policy, and keep our city moving. That's the spirit of the Defense Science Resolution we advanced today. Public health, public health is critical for all of us. I also wanted to comment on the bill that was just passed. We advanced equity with the Economic Opportunity Review Committee legislation. This doesn't weaken standards or transparency, it improves outcomes. Bringing in the Asian-American and LGBTQ+ chambers, along with labor, which already has DC 33 and 47 there, and neighborhood enterprises, and the city has only one seat, it broadens perspective, strengthens cultural competency, and makes competition fair. This is not a voting body, this is an oversight body, so there are no votes cast in this body. When more qualified firms can compete, public dollars expand opportunity, Philadelphia gets better value, and more families benefit. And here we are again, facing a federal crisis that threatens dignity. Food on the table. On October 20th, 2025, Pennsylvania's Department of Human Services announced that because of the shutdown, November SNAP payments will not be issued unless Congress acts immediately. Nearly 2 million Pennsylvanians are affected. The Commonwealth cannot backfill those costs. People can use unspent EBT funds, and DHS will keep processing applications, but new November benefits won't load without a budget or a continuing resolution. Residents need help and should use PA 211 and Feeding PA Resources. However, for some neighbors, that means they will not eat. SNAP is a lifeline for children, seniors, people with disabilities, working parents, students, and veterans who sacrificed for this country. SNAP Ed, which helps families stretch tight budgets, is also disrupted right when it's most needed. Philadelphia will show up for our neighbors, but families shouldn't rely on charity to cover for a political failure. I'm urging the administration to treat food access as an emergency, aligning Parks and Recreation, the Free Library, Public Health, and the Managing Director's Office to push for clear stigma-free information by zip code and by day through city channels, libraries, rec centers, senior sites, and 311. We must also join our state partners and federal delegation in demanding an immediate end to the shutdown and full protection of SNAP and SNAP Ed. Food is not negotiable. And there is a through line in today's work. Evidence, equity, dignity. Defending science keeps people healthy. Empowering the EORC opens doors so more Philadelphians can participate in our economy. Protecting SNAP keeps families, including veterans, fed during a crisis. This is government people can see, touch, and feel in daily life. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Good afternoon, Council President. Two things, I'm gonna try to be very brief. First, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the family of Ms. Scott. Clearly, it's been some heavy hearts and a lot of remarks. It's a very emotional situation that really captured the entire country, not just the city of Philadelphia. So I do want to say a special thank you to Councilmember Phillips for his leadership as it relates to supporting the family. A special thank you to Councilmember Bass, although the family didn't live in her district, clearly there remains, found in her district. Their leadership and willingness to work together, I think, is really important, representing this legislative body and being as supportive of possible, not just to the family, but to all of the people who had to experience trauma in that situation. I also want to say thank you, I will also say thank you to State Rep. Andre Carroll, because he was the state rep there, for his leadership as well. And I also want to say thank you to the members of the Education Committee and the School District of Philadelphia. The School District of Philadelphia committed to doing a better job of maintaining this 20 vacant buildings here in the city of Philadelphia, which clearly sits in the 10 different districts that are represented by our colleagues, Council President, here in City Council. And while we thank them for this effort as it relates to providing emergency staff to address this issue, we're going to definitely take them by their word, but I am going to work with our colleagues and encourage folks to visit these sites, look at these buildings, take pictures, make sure that it's something that's not an eyesore to the community, and assure that if that is the case, that we're proactive instead of reactive, and put us in a position to make sure that our communities are as safe as possible. So to all of the legislators and different sectors of government who stepped up because of this unfortunate situation, I just want to say thank you to you all. Very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Outside of that, Council President, I introduced the bill today around the BERT exemption, I'm sorry, around BERT tax reduction, specifically looking at daycares. I think about Councilmember O'Rourke's package that he introduced, I think about my bill around energy, I think about Councilmember Phillips' speech around the Water Department, I think about other things that I've listened to Councilmember Lazada, Councilmember Young talk about quality of life issues in their district. And when we think about the fact that the $100,000 exemption is going away, there's one business and one industry in the city of Philadelphia that touches every district and a lot of families, especially working families that are struggling, and that's daycares. And as a father of two, who's paying for daycare myself, I thank God that with the inflation and the cost of living going up, that I'm able to somehow find a way to continue to pay for my wife and I, to continue to pay for our child.
That beverage tax.
Well, you know, unfortunately, I don't, I'm not able to take advantage of that, Council President. I got to pay the whole price. But it's, no, I appreciate you, Council President. But in all seriousness, there is, we as legislators have to step up right now and try our best to make sure that businesses continue to grow and thrive in the city of Philadelphia and assure that people can continue to afford to live in our great city. And so I know that there are a lot of thought leaders as legislators that are trying to contemplate what we can do as local government to help offset the rising costs and to help keep people in our city and in their homes. And I'm hoping that this legislation is another example of us trying to think through what we can do to support businesses who support families, as well as families who are in need. So I thank all of my colleagues who co-sponsored this legislation today. We look forward to in-depth dialogue, both with the daycare industry, families, as well as the members of City Council who are going to be voting on this support legislation. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna try to keep this short. I first wanted to thank Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for his leadership in supporting our small businesses, making childcare more affordable for Philadelphians. Right now, we could all use a break, but parents and entrepreneurs especially, so thank you for leading this charge. I'd also like to shout out and thank my amazing legislative aide, Jasmine Easley, for speaking on behalf of the resolution I introduced commemorating the 2025 Philadelphia Walk to End Alzheimer's. The Memory Walk has been happening around the country since 1991, and as it's the most common form of dementia in older adults, I know many in this room have likely seen the disease firsthand. Jasmine, I applaud you for your efforts in walking for your great-grandfather, and I encourage everyone to show their support for Alzheimer's patients and their families who care for them. I'd also like to thank you, Council President, for introducing a resolution calling for hearings to examine the impacts of the current crisis-threatening SNAP. With nearly 500,000 Philadelphia residents projected to lose access to their SNAP benefits in November if the shutdown continues, this concern is extremely urgent. Coordinated action is needed in our local and state government, and I appreciate your urgency in this matter, as well as Councilman Ahmed's participation. And finally, just want to take a second to lift up colleagues Nicholas O'Rourke and Anthony Phillips for their beautiful verbal eulogies of both Kada Scott and Rabbi Waschow. I think the two of them, kind of having to speak of their memories now, just kind of holds up what we need to do and what is so essential here in Philadelphia. We have a young woman who really just gave back in her life, was taken so soon and so horribly, and a man who lived until he was 92, working, fighting for everyone's rights, fighting against violence, fighting to make every single community a better place. These bookends are a moment in time right now for us to really take a deep look at ourselves, the actions that we're taking when we are not speaking out, when we need to speak out more, and how we need to make this a unifying effort, realizing that if we don't all come together on all of these issues, we will never succeed in finding Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, America, the world, the better place that we want it to be. So thank you both so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to also congratulate Mother News and Mikey Dread, that their morning show is something that gets Philadelphians going. I think iHeartRadio needs to understand that Philly is Philly, and we like to be local, and, you know, The Breakfast Club is okay, we're not watching on YouTube later on in the day, but we want to hear our local folks on the radio in the morning. So I think it's going to be something that they learn when they realize that the listenership in the mornings are going to drop on Part 99, just because we don't want to hear that. And I've seen that all over social media from folks, they just, they like The Breakfast Club, but they prefer Philadelphia, to be honest. Second, I want to thank Councilmember Rue Landau for the introduction of the resolution honoring the Alzheimer's Walk. And, you know, I lost my grandfather to Alzheimer's, my paternal grandfather. I remember one day I was coming home from, like, work with my dad, going over to my grandpa's house, had a suit on. He had no idea who I was. He looked at me and said, asked my dad, "Who's that? Is that the boss?" And that just broke my heart, like, that my grandfather had no idea who I was. So I understand what those families are going through and dealing with that. I also would like to give my condolences to the families of Ms. Scott. I mean, as I'm sitting here writing my notes, I'm writing my notes with a pen that says Women Against Abuse, right, domestic violence. And, man, like I said, this, real people really go do real things, and domestic violence is something I witnessed my life firsthand. And it's nothing that I will put on anyone, particularly as a child, to watch family members go through domestic violence. It's just, it's heartbreaking to know that people who claim to love each other, people who claim to be, you know, wanting the best for someone, to hurt someone like that. So it just makes me just sad all over again. I can, I'm picturing myself as a five-year-old child watching things going on in my household. It's crazy. But today, we introduce a bill that will prevent vacant lots without a building permit in the 5th Council District. And I was inspired by Councilmember Jamie Gaudier. When you look at development that's happening in the 5th District and gentrification, sometimes you have folks who are just speculators, who just buy property, you know, tear it down, sit on it, and wait for the market to shift so they can just, you know, build a half-million-dollar house. But that creates blight in communities. And so what this bill would do is would prevent folks from demolishing properties without having a building permit for the erection of a new property, unless the property, of course, is eminently dangerous, unsafe, and things like that. We, you know, we have to, preservation is the ultimate way to create affordable communities, and I think this bill is about preserving our communities in the 5th Council District. Want to thank my colleagues for passing a bill today where we remapped part of Hunting Park, the 5th District portion of the Hunting Park neighborhood. As you heard from Ms. Audrey Cole today, who testified, this was a community-driven effort from the moment I got elected to this. From the moment I got elected to this position, we worked with that community to ensure that that neighborhood looks like what the community wants it to look like. So this remapping is a labor of love that took us about over a year to get done. But as you can see, those community members are grateful that we took the time to get it done for them. Today, we also introduced a resolution that would hold hearings to examine the refund system of our city. When we owe our city money, they come get it. But when they owe us money, it takes them months and years to give it back. So we got to figure out why does it take that long, right? Because that is, you know, when it comes to accounting strategies for businesses, when it comes to family members, working people in this city who would need that money, they can't wait six months to a year to get that money back. And so we really have to examine why it takes so long to process refunds. When you're a city worker and you owe the city, they take that right out your check. But if you, if you got to get some money back, again, it takes a very long time. And they only can give it to you in a check form. This is 2025. Like, we should be able to have a direct deposit into our accounts when we get, where we owed a refund from the city of Philadelphia. So I look forward to hosting this hearing to examine that particular issue. And finally, Mr. President, we also introduced a resolution today which will rename Oxford Street from Broad Street to 15th Street as Jake and Sarah Adams Avenue. For those who don't know, Mr. Jake is the owner of Barbara's Hall, Mr. Jake and Ms. Sarah. And he finally has decided to retire, and he sold his property to Temple University. And I want to be able to give Mr. Jake his flowers while he can still smell them. Mr. Jake is in his 80s. He has done so much for the North Philadelphia community. He was a ward leader for 15 years, a committee person for over 50 years. And I think, you know, next week, hopefully, my colleagues will be able to pass this legislation. And I encourage everyone who hears my voice, who knows Mr. Jake, who knows Barbara's Hall, who loves that community to come out, to testify and show your support and love, because that man really, really deserves that. And so with that, Mr. President, I close. Thank you so much for allowing me to do this today.
Thank you very much. As you wrap up, I also just want to thank the colleagues who worked together and showed up and supported the family of Kada Scott. But also, most importantly, working together as a unit on issues that's very near and dear and critical to the residents here in the city of Philadelphia. And they're watching how we operate, how we come together in times of crisis, and most importantly, how we advocate the move the city of Philadelphia forward. So I commend all of you, and most importantly, beyond my heart's and prayers on going out to the family, we will have a very robust hearing on looking at our criminal justice system as a whole from the top down to make sure we don't fail another person, young person, moving forward. Because ultimately, as leaders in government, we have a firm responsibility, right? To lead and make sure we're protecting those who are most vulnerable. And so I'm looking forward to the hearing and also some policy changes in terms of our criminal justice system, because the family needs more than just prayers and words and speeches here on the council floor. So we're going to do a deeper dive and look at our whole system, criminal justice system as a whole. With that being said, the Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas for a motion to adjourn. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I have to get this out, Mr. President. I apologize for this. But on Monday, I attended the Janaza of London Major. It was a 16-year-old who was shot and killed in North Philadelphia. I happen to know her mother personally. Her mother lost two kids to gun violence before they were 17 years old, right? So that is something I have to get out there and to let the community members know that this is something that we are staying vigilant. And to those, I will always be quarrelsome when it comes to the issue of gun violence in our city and making sure that we are preventing these teenagers from being killed. I'm sorry, Mr. President. I had to get that off. So I want to say my condolences to my friend Dee for losing two children before they had the opportunity to finish high school to gun violence in North Philadelphia. So thank you for that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Remember, you're on the Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Sam, I know you'll appreciate this. I want to say happy birthday to my father. I said I was going to do that last week. Today's my dad's birthday. Happy birthday to my dad. And with that being, I know he's watching right now, so happy birthday, Dad. Mr. President, I move that council standard adjourned until Thursday, October 30th, 2025 at 10:00 AM.
It has a move in property. Second, the council standard adjourned until Thursday, October 30th, 2025 at 10:00 AM. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you all very much for the good work today.